Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We are a little late starting because our planning applications took longer. We have all members of council present. Does anyone have a disclosure pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Seeing and hearing none. The municipality of Central Elgin would like to acknowledge that we gather on the land of the McKee Purchase, the traditional territory of the Hugnisoni, Atawandran, and Mississauga Nation. Would you read the motion concerning the minutes, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that the minutes of the regular meeting of council dated Monday, April the 11th, 2022 be adopted.
Any questions? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Council Row? Yes. Council Cravitz?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Council Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Now, I'm moving on to correspondence requiring action. The first one is about the sale of ice cream in conjunction with the soccer club in Belmont. We're looking for staff direction on this one. What are your thoughts, Council Wynn?
Sounds like a great idea. So, we've had something previous or something similar to this, not quite as a big a scale as this trailer is, but I think very industrious and think it's a great idea.
Any other comments or questions? Council Fair?
I'm just curious. It's a trailer there and they're going into a partnership with the soccer club. Is the soccer club, under normal circumstances, allowed to use that parking lot area too? So, I'm just curious if the soccer club is entitled to that already, then, but I just wanted to make sure they are.
Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, through you, Mayor Martin, the soccer club will utilize the newly constructed parking lot at the back of Don Yack Park, and they also utilize the parking lot at the arena, so.
Any other questions? One of the thoughts had been that it might be precedent-setting in the sense that we've had people in Port Stanley requesting similar things along the beach, and we may be inundated with food things, but this is on our property and it is a rental that we are proposing. Council Wynn?
Well, I was just saying, like, we have previously had people selling frozen yogurt and such along the beach before, so. But I don't know, this is in conjunction with a Friday night, a Friday evening, families, kids. I don't know, to me, it just seems like a perfect fit for the area and what's happening there, so.
Yeah, I thought it was very logical. It just, now, I will say, if there's been anything on the beach, they have had to take out a license and pay a fee, et cetera. Deputy Mayor Marks, you wish to speak?
I think it's a great idea, too, but as far as the question of setting precedent, I think it will. I think if we allow this, I'm not against this, but if someone wants to do it in the Port Stanley Arena or one of our parks in the municipality, I'm not looking. I think it'd be hard to say no.
Council Cravitz?
Yeah, I agree with that. As far as the building, there is nobody in direct competition in the area. No bricks and mortars buildings in direct competition, so that's one reason I'm in favor. I like ice cream. Is it, the trailer going to be permanently set up for the summer? Is that their intent? Or is it a mobile trailer that is removable at any time?
Mr. Brooks?
My understanding is that it'll be a mobile trailer that will move in and out on the Friday nights.
Mr. Shipway?
Through you, Madam Mayor. From a legislative perspective, Port Stanley has a standalone zoning bylaw that prohibits the placement of refreshment vehicles, so it's a little bit different than Yarmouth or Belmont. Yarmouth and Belmont both have licensing bylaws. Belmont's is from 93. The municipality is in the process of updating the licensing bylaw for council review. This is presented to council because to place it there, it would require council approval. Wouldn't want to read too much into it about application beyond the general concept of application because Port Stanley does have that standalone zoning bylaw which prohibits mobile refreshment vehicles.
And I did check to make sure that the booth that is there is not being used, so, which is quite away from the new soccer fields anyway, but I mean, it's not, no one is using the booth this summer, so it's not competing with the booth. Okay. You, so would someone like to move if?
Move that would grant the one-year application for this such purpose.
Okay, and Council Wynn wishes to second it. Would you read the motion then, please?
Madam Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Council Cravitz, seconded by Council Wynn, that council has no objections to a request by Carson Harris to partner with the Belmont Soccer Club to sell ice cream from his trailer in the Belmont Arena parking lot on soccer evenings during the 2022 soccer season.
Thank you. Would you call the vote, please?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Cravitz? Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Council Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And now the Port Stanley BIA asking about signage and parking, so. Questions? Any questions and comments, and so we can give staff direction on this one as well? Council Wynn?
I kind of like the idea of a two-hour maximum. I think that's a great idea, and unless I'm missing something, might go not, maybe not a long way, but some way to helping, you know, relieve a bit of the pressure for parking down in Port.
Yeah, and we can only do the roads that belong to Central Elgin, but I do, I think the motion was going to read that we also recommend that the county look at Bridge Street and Colburn, et cetera, that they own down there and that they do the two-hour limit. We already have a limit on William Street, but we're including it just so people recognize that again. Go ahead, Council Row.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is a concept that we talked about when we were talking about the other bylaws, I guess, and it was just at that time, we thought, well, we'll see what happens, but there's been enough vocal comment about, we do need the limit to keep the businesses and the turnover going, so it's really just bringing forward that decision, I think is a good thing. My only question was, does that include Joseph Street also? Because there's a few spots just to the east. Well, I guess it would be on the west side of Joseph Street, just as you're going up the hill north. There was a concern there for parking spaces as well, so as long as that can be part of the.
And I believe in front of the inn, et cetera, that's Joseph Street as well, the Kettle Creek Inn.
And further, but yeah, it's on the other side.
Both of those areas.
Yes, Mr. Perrin?
So, just a point of clarification. So, Joseph Street, Bridge Street, and Colburn are all County of Elgin roads?
Hey, that's County.
The ones that we would seek. The counties, you know, indulge us to work with us to correspond the time limits explicitly on streets, if that's council's direction.
Go ahead, Council.
Sorry, so so in the motion, it would include that we ask the county then?
Yes, and I believe we were looking at, what, Main, Hetty, Colonel Bostwick? And, pardon me?
And William.
And William, which?
As municipal streets. My understanding right now is that it would be Bridge, Joseph Street, and Colburn Street are county-owned streets.
Would like to read, oh, you don't, you need a mover and seconder. Did you have a, you just wanted to move?
Well, I just wanted to.
Speak to it?
Municipal parking lot, is it different, or is it a two- hour as well, with its rules?
Mr. Perrin?
As per council's previous direction, there'll be paid parking implemented in the municipal parking lot on the north side of Bridge Street, back behind the pharmacy, the visitor center parking lot, the parking lot at the end of Main Street, and the little beach parking lot. So, they will all be paid parking with no time limits, with the exception of in the pharmacy parking lot and visitor parking lot, there will be space, parking spaces dedicated for short turnaround. So, people that are utilizing the public washrooms at the visitor center or getting information at the visitor center, they can come in without having to pay and get, you know, do those things, as well as picking up prescriptions at the pharmacy. For example, there'd be 15-minute parking there where they can get in and do this. Other than that, if someone paid the full-day rate in those parking spots, they can stay all day. Or conversely, purchase a seasonal parking pass, then they can stay the whole day as well.
Council Wynn?
I would move.
Move the motion, please. Okay. We need a seconder. Deputy Mayor Marks? Would you read the motion, Mrs. Wilson?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Wynn, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, whereas council has received correspondence from the Port Stanley BIA Board of Management voicing concerns with parking in the village of Port Stanley, now therefore be resolved that council directs staff install two-hour parking limit signage on the following municipally-owned streets in Port Stanley: Main Street, William Street, Colonel Bostwick Street, and Hetty Street. Further, that staff be directed to seek county of an approval to install two-hour parking limit signage on the following county-owned streets in Port Stanley: Bridge Street, Joseph Street, Colburn Street, for the purposes of harmonization and consistency.
Just a question, is that during business hours, or is that 24 hours a day?
Mr. Perrin?
It would coincide with the hours of paid parking, we would suggest.
And those go up to?
10:00 AM to 5:00?
Okay, thank you.
And so that really doesn't affect the theater then at all?
No, and my understanding is, having discussions with Mr. Allen, they've had conversations with the theater, and theater did not have concerns with respect to the two-hour time limit.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, would you call the vote? I'm sorry, Council Row.
All right, so I think it's just important, though, to note that it is only 10:00 to 5:00 in that motion. Add that. Yes. Okay, into the motion.
Seven days a week. Or Asper.
Let's go ahead, call the vote.
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Cravitz?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Council Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. Now, we're moving on to the Central Elgin Planning Office, and we're looking at first the consent application for 204 Union Street, Block E. Obviously, these two in a row are, 204 and 206 are, I mean, obviously, we either have to pass both of them or not at all because it wouldn't work with one or the other separately. Questions about them? Go ahead, Council Row.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't really have an issue with it. I guess what I have trouble understanding is if they're going to sever the two pieces from the two different properties, why not sever just a little bit more so that then all four, until maybe the other two are combined into one lot, are actually the minimum size for a building lot? Because the two that are being severed are, I think, a little bit shy of the square meters for a minimum lot. So, just curious why we're not doing that, unless I misread something.
I would assume they have to be combined because that's the only way they'll front on a road. They have to have access to a road.
And which is, which is fine, but then the width of them is not. I don't know.
Something was, any comments, Mr. McClure?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you to Council Row. As has been kind of discussed, the purpose of the application is to, and why there are two separate applications are that because there are two separate exist parcels of record, there needs to be two applications in order to sever off the rear portions of the property in order to facilitate them merging into that new roadway, I'm sorry, that new lot that would front onto Victoria. Again, the, so the, so my understanding is, again, once they are merged, they will meet the minimum requirements for the zone, but ultimately, until they merge, there, there's obviously deficiencies of those separate parcels. But that's part of the rationale and the recommendation is part of the, the report is that they are merged, that they are to be merged together in order to facilitate that new lot that would front onto Victoria.
Go ahead, Council Row.
Thank you, which is really what I fully expected, I guess, what I also. It's a way to work around, I think, the comment that's included in the, in the application. Basically, it says consent is okay as long as no new building lot is created. Well, that's exactly what is being done, even though there is a second step to creating that building lot, so, I don't know. It's just kind of a little push-pull for me.
Any other questions? If not, would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, report CPO 922, we receive your information, and that council has no objections to consent application E2122, Hall Marks, 204 Union Street, Block E, Lot 1, Reference Plan 319, subject to the following recommended conditions. Applicant enters into an agreement with the municipality of Central Elgin to address administrative, technical, and financial matters. The payment of cash and the dedication of 5% of the land for parkland purposes, the severed land be merged entitled with parcel B, consent application E222, that subsection three or five of section 50 of the Planning Act RSO 1990, as amended, shall apply to any subsequent conveyance or transaction involving the subject lands. The solicitor for the applicant is to provide an undertaking whereby they inform the committee in writing that the lands are being conveyed to an abutting property owner, and thus, a merger of title will take place, which merger shall include all interest held inclusive or mortgagees' interest. The municipality of Central Elgin will be provided with a copy of the reference plan, and a drainage assessment be completed, if necessary, at the owner's expense.
Would you call the vote, please?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Cravitz?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Council Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
And I'm assuming there's no discussion on the next one, just because it's exactly the same thing, just to make the other half of the new lot. So, would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report CPO 1022, we receive your information, and that council has no objections to consent application 2222, Richard Glover, 206 Union Street, Block E, Lot 2, Reference Plan 319, subject to the following recommended conditions. Applicant enters into an agreement with the municipality of Central Elgin to address administrative, technical, and financial matters. The metal sheds located on the retained lot north of the existing metal-clad garage be removed or relocated to the satisfaction of the municipality of Central Elgin. The payment of cash and the dedication of 5% of the land for parkland purposes. The severed land be merged entitled with parcel B, consent application E2122, that subsection three or five of section 50 of the Planning Act RSO 1990, as amended, shall apply to any subsequent conveyance or transaction involving the subject lands. Solicitor for the applicant is to provide an undertaking whereby they inform the committee in writing that the plans are being conveyed to an abutting property owner, and thus, a merger of title will take place, which merger shall include all interest held inclusive or mortgagees' interest. The municipality of Central Elgin will be provided with a copy of the reference plan, and a drainage assessment be completed, if necessary, at the owner's expense.
Thank you. Would you call the vote, please?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Cravitz?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Council Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And now, we're going to consent application for 43315 Roberts Line. Council Cravitz?
Thank you. I'll talk about number three, four, and six all at the same time. It all has to do with the same property at 43315 Roberts Line. With this, it's, I have a question about provincial policy and how we deal with provincial policy. Just for example, on Roberts Line, I'm talking about a section between Fairview and Sunset Road. So, at 42892, there was a letter sent into this municipality requesting that three of the four houses on that property could be severed off, and it was denied. Leaving one farmhouse on that farm. And a crossroad at 42947, the property owner there, who does not live at that farm, they own numerous farms in the area, requested to have one property removed, severed off, and it was denied because it was not new purchase consolidation. As well, 43075, which is also in that same stretch, I'm talking with the exact same stretch. There was a lady, the property owner there had two houses on the property, the main house, as well as another house, and she wanted to build a retirement house. And what was required by her, she could not sever this property there. What she had to do, she had to tear the one smaller house down to build a brand-new house, it's just happened in the last year. And then we get this application that comes in at 43315, where they're taking, they're calling it part A and, or parcel A and parcel B off of the same farm. They're requesting two applications to take two house properties off of this farm property, the single farm. I don't know, like, if the application, are we allowed to take one house off, no houses, multiple houses? It's not very clear. And what this do, and this is, and then the, on the land that's retained, which we've approved a lot of them, the land that is retained does not have a house on and cannot build a house on that property ever. That's one of the stipulations of these proposals. I'm starting to have a real issue with the breaking up of these farm properties, the cherry-picking and one, what's allowed and what's not allowed. There's something that's wrong, and I think we need to get some indication from the province on what provincial policy is and what it's trying to achieve. I don't know, Mr. McClure, if you can, it's a tough question to answer in such a short notice, but it's something that I'm having a hard time putting on, allowing severance after severance. And with this one, this case right here, it's just turning into a piece of agricultural land with never the possibility of a farm ever being created on this property. So, I'm going to have a hard time dealing with these applications. And I'd like to get something from the province, some answer on what provincial policy is actually aiming for. It's an issue I have, and I know we can't stall in granting these application or addressing these, but it's got to come to a time where we got to start thinking a little more of the future here, rather than just rubber-stamping applications as they come before this council.
Mr. McClure, do you wish to speak to that? I have one other question that maybe I should ask, and then you could speak to both of them at the same time. And that was just, in the past, if farms amalgamated, they could, if there was a house surplus, and they had a house on one of the farms, but the new farm, there was a house that was surplus, they could sever that house. But my understanding was they could only sever one house for each new amalgamation. Is that correct or not? That was my understanding.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess with respect to both questions, ultimately, the provincial policy statement does set out the, I guess, the direction for, I guess, residents that are surplus to a farming operation through consolidation, similar to, I guess, the previous applications that we were dealing with. Why, and this is why, again, there's, there's two specific severance applications. Through that severance application process, they were able to demonstrate that as part of multiple farm holdings and multiple farm consolidations, that neither of these dwellings were permitted, or I guess, required as part of their farming operations, so they were able to go through the surplus farm severance policies, the provincial policy statement, the county official plan, and the municipality's official plan as well, to allow for, for the two separate severances. Ultimately, the direction, again, by the province, is that in order to ensure that we don't get further fragmentation within the agricultural community as a result of these surplus farm severances, that the remaining parcels of land are designated to not permit a dwelling so that we can't, so that the situations don't kind of continue on in perpetuity. So, that's the provincial direction. The policies allow for these types of severances to occur, and the county and municipality's official plan allow for it as well. I can't speak to those other applications, but just noting, or so those other properties, but noting in the, I guess, one of the properties that was, or addresses that was looked at or provided by Council Cravitz. I mean, it would look like while it is within maybe an OS1 zone, the lands themselves are not within an agricultural area, or wouldn't be considered part of a farm use. So, those policies may not be, or wouldn't, I'm assuming, were not accepted at that time because of the fact that the surplus farm severances, you need to be able to show that you are a bona fide farm, and that ultimately, the property itself is going to remain in agriculture. So, I understand that there are certain properties within the municipality that may be on undersized lots within an agricultural area, but it's, again, the provincial policy statement and our own policies are very specific in the circumstances in which you can have severances for rural residential use in an agricultural area. And then, again, it's tried, trying to ensure that there, I guess, is minimizing the impacts of a lot creation in a farm in an agricultural area.
There's no limit to the number, because that was, that was my understanding in the past, that, that if you consolidated two farms, you could sever off a surplus dwelling on one of those farms. I didn't think, I didn't realize you could sever off more than one, if there was more than one on that farm.
No, there would, it would have to be demonstrated as part of the farm holdings that there were multiple consolidations, hence, the fact that there are two severance applications to deal with the two houses that are being severed off. The PPS itself does not specifically state a specific number, but typically, within, with the, I guess, the applications that we receive, there's one dwelling on the parcel, and as part of a farm consolidation, they sever off the one dwelling. That's why, again, this is two separate severance applications, because you're dealing with, I guess, in essence, three parcels that have consolidated two dwellings that are not required. So, each individual severance or each individual house has been justified through that provincial policy to allow for them to be removed from the agricultural holding.
My only concern is this was one farm with a farmhouse and a hired man's, it's not, not two farms, but. Deputy Mayor Marks, you would to speak, and Mr. Perrin wishes to speak.
Ultimately, the consent comes from the land division at the county, and they've had their issues the last two or three years. Certainly, a lot of change in staff and interpretation. What puzzles me, and there's been a fair bit of discussion at the county level, is the interpretation say that, are the rules the same in West Eldon as they are here and as in Bam? Or does each municipality interpret it different, Mr. McClure?
I can't speak to those other municipalities, but the, the planning system is a provincial policy-led planning system. So, we're all governed by the same provincial policies, and the official plans at the county needs to conform to that provincial direction, as does the municipality's official plans. Further, the Planning Act provides that planning authorities are required to make decisions that are consistent with provincial plans. So, again, I can't speak to the decision-makers and other municipalities, but ultimately, we're all governed by the same rules that are outlined in the provincial policy statement.
Land Division doesn't know.
Yeah, that's, you know, all we're doing is commenting at Central Elgin. Ultimately, the final decision comes from the Land Division Council. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And even if we say yea or nay, they can do what they want. And sometimes have done that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Perrin, you want to speak?
Maybe, to go about this, another way of answering your question, your, Madam. Maybe to go about this, another way of answering your question, your, Madam Mayor. So with respect to the number of dwellings that can be severed off, and Mr. McClure can correct me if I, if I'm wrong, but with respect to farm consolidations, it's, it's not the farm, the farm corporate farm purchases a property, and they can only sever one house off. That farm corporation could have amalgamated four or five different farms throughout their life. Some of those are vacant farm parcels. They're still considered a consolidation. So if I own farm one and I buy farm two without any houses on it, then that's considered a consolidation, and then I go and buy farm three that has two houses on it. I'm now permitted to take two houses off, because both of those houses are surplus to the farm operation. Is that correct, Mr. McClure?
That, that'd be correct, Mr. Perrin. Ultimately, as you're probably well aware of, previously, there were farm retirement lots that allowed for previously the severing off of these residential dwellings. The province got away from that to ensure that they weren't creating residential nuisance in smaller farm parcels out in the agricultural community. So as part of that, and the recognition that not all farmers want to be landlords. They, as part, that's, that's where they came up with this. So ultimately, if, if a, if a farm holding ended up buying a parcel of land that had a house on it and had multiple other holdings, they didn't want to be a landlord for that, that dwelling. They're able to go through this process to show that they've consolidated operations. Again, it doesn't need to be within the same municipality or adjacent properties. But as long as they're, they're able to demonstrate that they're, they're overall farm holdings. There's some sort of consolidation going on, and they no longer want that dwelling, that this is the process that they, they go forward to justify that.
I think one of the things that I expressed, Mr. McClure, in the past, we had, I am aware of one other one. These consolidation occurred over a hundred years ago, and they were still allowed to sever off a surplus dwelling, which had actually been used as the hired man's house for a hundred years. So I was curious about that one too, because I thought there should be a time limit. I thought the consolidation should have occurred within a certain length of time that they are allowed then to do the severance, but that isn't in our thing, so that's just a concern. Mr. Counselor Crevitz, go ahead.
Still, I have that concern about having multiple properties that can be severed off, because it changes the whole dynamics of what, and what and what cannot be done. What this is going to do, this is going to encourage people to start looking, and this is public, like this announced now, that look for farms in Central Elgin that have two, three houses on. And then amalgamate and start selling off houses. Is this what, is this what the path we're leading down? I don't know. I have a hard time voting on this even. I'd like to get some provincial policy, some clear statement from the province to say why we're allowing these, these severances and multiple severances.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
I, I agree, but ultimately, no matter what we comment, Land Division has the final say. You're the agents for the provincial government. That's their, in their realm to do it. And just decisions that less than popular, we found that out.
So.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Then is it in our best interest to accept one of these applications and deny the other and state that to the Land Division Committee?
The biggest issue there would be, according to Mr. McClure, this is part of provincial policy, allowing the two. Because supposedly, this, I don't know, the farmer who's purchased this property, I don't know how many consolidations they've had, but they're justifying this because they've had more consolidations than just this, and some of them were vacant land. At least that appears to be what's happening.
Mr. Perrin and then Counselor Rowe.
If you go just to the east on Roberts Line, this council approved a similar situation where it was a corporate farm severed a house off surplus to the farm operation, and the remnant parcel, that, that severance was approved supported by this council and approved by Land Division, with the condition that the remnant farm parcel be zoned for no further development.
Yes.
But it was just. And that, and that step there satisfies provincial policy statement too, with respect to the protection of agricultural lands.
There've been several enough on that area.
The only argument with that, Mr. Perrin, is that if that happens, then a house can never be built on that property, so it's never encouraging anybody to ever get into, even if it was a small farm operation. That's the only problem with that policy. You've actually landlocked that farm in perpetuity by not allowing any development on it ever. And this is what we're doing all the time here.
And every so often, there's an election and provincial policy changes, as it has in the past. Mr. McClure.
They could just, just to, to build on that, though, I think it comes down to, and then if I'm getting this correct, is that there's a a concern that we can allow for one dwelling to be severed off, but not two. And there's also this other concern that we're not allowing for residences to be constructed on the remnant, or I guess the retained parcel. But I think that's ultimately what we're trying to get at, and what the province, I guess, ultimately decided to go with when they went through. And at that time, it was the 2015 PPS that changed it from the farm retirement lot, I believe, to the, to the surplus residence. As, you know, surplus farm severance. And ultimately, that's, it's, it's that balancing act of realizing that these, I guess, severed parcels of land now create potential nuisance concerns for agricultural operations within the agricultural area from an MDS perspective. So it's recognizing, okay, there's certain limited circumstances where this can occur under the provincial policy, but ultimately, we don't want to create more of these potential nuisances by allowing for residential, new residential dwellings to be constructed on those farm parcels that could then just go through that surplus farm severance policy in the future to create ribbon development within the agricultural community that could then impact the, kind of like the whole, the whole agricultural industry.
I understand that as well, Mr. McClure, but I, I agree with Counselor Crevitz in the sense that no, we're making farm parcels huge parcels with all these consolidations, and there's very little chance then of someone new wanting to just have a, you know, a more intensive type of farm, because there's no house on it, and they can't build a house on it, if they, even if they could buy it. Which does make it a challenge. I believe Counselor Rowe, you had a question.
Maybe just a couple of things. So there is a comment in the report that says council may request that an applicant provide evidence as to the nature of the existing farm operation. So there's nothing preventing us from collecting that information, and perhaps that should be something that's done on a regular basis as opposed to guessing how many times they've actually been amalgamated. So that was the first thing. And the second thing is just, I think, have to kind of define what our actual goals are in this. So first off, I think the goal is to protect agricultural land. So by doing it this way, that is happening. It doesn't preclude a new buyer of that agricultural land from also buying the adjacent lot that also happens to have a house on it, whether it's on the lot or adjacent to the lot. You know, the timing may not be quite there, I understand that, but it is close. It may never be combined, but it still exists. So those opportunities still remain. And if the goal, like I said, is, the primary goal is to protect agricultural land by not allowing future development on that property, on that retained land, I think it's the right thing to do with what we have to work with.
Yes. Any other questions on this one? Go ahead, Counselor Fair.
Just, just to follow up from Counselor Rowe, I'm just wondering, was that question asked? How many operations they had consolidated? Maybe it was asked and just not on the report.
Mr. McClure, would you know if that question is asked when they, people are asked, are come to requesting a severance?
Yes, just through you, as that's part of the, I guess, the criteria within the Land Division Committee's application form is to demonstrate the number of farm holdings and consolidations as part of that application. As part of this application itself, I know that the consultants report that assisted the, the landowners with this outlined the, like the, you know, various holdings that they had, and it was, it is quite a, I guess, a large number of, of holding, farm holdings that they, that they have.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, would you read the motion, Mrs. Wilson? Do you have mover and secondor?
I do.
Okay.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counselor Fair, that reports CEP 1622 be received for information, and that council has no objections to consent application E 2522, Maple View Farms, four three three one five Roberts Line, subject to the following recommended conditions. Approval of a zoning bylaw amendment to prohibit residential dwellings on the retained lot and recognize deficient front yard setback for the surplus farm dwelling on parcel A. Confirmation that a new septic system has been constructed on parcel A to the satisfaction of the municipality of Central Elgin. Confirmation that the two existing greenhouses on parcel A have been removed to the satisfaction of the municipality of Central Elgin. A copy of the reference plan be provided to the municipality of Central Elgin, and a drainage reassessment be completed, if necessary, at the owner's expense.
Thank you. Would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitz?
No.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
No.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes. Now, the next one is the, just the equivalent one. We've had a fair discussion. This is the other severance of the other house. So would you read that motion, please?
Madam Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that reports CEP 1722 be received for information, and that council has no objections to consent application E 2622, Maple View Farms, four three three one five Roberts Line, subject to the following recommended conditions. Approval of a zoning bylaw amendment to prohibit residential dwellings on the retained lot and recognize the deficient side yard setback for the detached garage on parcel B. Confirmation that a new septic system has been constructed on parcel B to the satisfaction of the municipality of Central Elgin. Confirmation that the swimming pool on parcel B has been removed or relocated to the satisfaction of the municipality of Central Elgin. A copy of the reference plan be provided to the municipality of Central Elgin, and a drainage reassessment be completed, if necessary, at the owner's expense.
Go ahead, Counselor Crevitz.
I'd like to defer this vote until we have more, until I can receive more information on provincial policy. That's my request. It doesn't have to be accepted.
Thoughts from the rest of you? Counselor Fair?
I would, I would agree with that to get better clarification on this.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
I think we've had a fair bit of information given us to my staff and planner. You know, I'm sitting here thinking, if these houses are severed and they go into private ownership, you know, that pride of ownership. I'm around long enough, there's been some old houses that have been rented out, and sometimes that's not the best thing. It's for our tax base. People invest in their houses that, I and if we really believe in the supremacy of farmland, the fact that they're getting bigger doesn't bother me, because that's what the farmers want to need. This, this applicant, they're, they're, thank God, they're there. They're young and energetic, and they're feeding an awful lot of people, so I would hate to slow them down. I, I think we ought to make a decision tonight.
Counselor Crevitz, and then I'll go ahead, Debbie, Madam Mayor, procedurally, is there a motion moved and seconded on the floor?
And through you, Madam Chair, procedurally, as the chair, you may make the decision, but a motion to defer or postpone is procedurally out of order when there's a motion on the floor, and further, it's not debatable.
Thank you. So there is, there is a motion on the floor, which means that we need to vote on this motion.
And/or have the mover and secondor remove whichever you as the chair. Agree to proceed.
And who were the mover and secondor, please?
Counselor Fair and secondor was Deputy Mayor Marks.
Wish to proceed with this?
I would, I would rather take my name off it.
That it's, that's what you are saying, that that's acceptable, and if Counselor Fair removes his name from this motion?
Mover and secondor.
He's the mover.
And the secondor.
I'm fine with it.
Your dis-
So we'd need another mover if this is to carry forward?
Well, if both the mover and secondor aren't willing to move, then I believe it has to stand. It's your discretion. That's the chair.
It has to stand, even though the mover wishes to have his name removed.
Well, it's been put forward in red. You can make your decision as the chair, though. We're just providing procedural guidance as the motion was provided on the floor.
Okay, I guess we'll let it proceed then, because we, it was read with a mover and secondor. So would you call the vote then, Mrs. Wilson?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitz?
No.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
No.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes. Thank you.
Now, we're on the consent application concerning four thirty one Front Street. Read the motion, please.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counselor Fair, that reports CEP 1822 be received for information, and that council has no objections to consent application E 8521, one five five one nine four five Ontario Limited, four three one Front Street, subject to the following recommended conditions. The applicant obtains a planning approval for any zoning deficiencies relative to parcel A and parcel B. The applicant enters into an agreement with the municipality of Central Elgin to address administrative technical, implement foundations, geotechnical, ISR reports, and financial matters. The applicant removes the parking area and air conditioning unit located on the municipal right-of-way to the satisfaction of the Director of Asset Management and Development. The payment of cash and the dedication of five percent of the land for part-time purposes in the municipality of Central Elgin will be provided with a copy of the reference plan, and a drainage reassessment be completed, if necessary, at the owner's expense.
Does anyone have any questions or concerns over this one? Counselor Rowe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question. So this was actually deferred from last November. And there was a list of things that they could do. Some of them were also mentioned in the motion, but I was just looking from planning to see if those requirements, or the reason for the prior, prior deferral, if those have been satisfied.
Go ahead, Mr. McClure.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you to Counselor Rowe. Yes, as was indicated in the report, the geotechnical and issue scoping report were undertaken or completed to the satisfaction of staff that they could move forward with the application as proposed.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crevitz? Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Okay, and now we're moving to the next one, which is on the same property there on Roberts Line. Would you read the motion, please? Yes, please, just so we know what the motion is. You, oh, yeah, we've got a mover and, read it without a mover and secondor, just so everyone's fully aware of the motion.
The motion reads, Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, it's in the report. I guess that's adequate.
Just for the public hearing date.
It's for the public hearing date. Go ahead, Counselor Crevitz.
One question. Number three states that, where's it? Well, lot creation in these areas is discouraged. Subsection three two three four one C of the provincial policy statement provides that a severance for a residence may be deemed surplus. That's all.
That's been my interest.
Yeah, this is just to have a public hearing so that people can object if they wish to the zoning change. Not the severance, but the zoning. Does any have any more questions, any comments on this? If not, would you read the motion with mover and secondor, please?
Madam Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that reports CEP 1922 be received, and the direction be given by council to- and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the zoning by law to satisfy conditions of two residences, surplus to a farming operation severance on lands located at 43315 Roberts Line, Mapleview Farms, which may be legally described as concession to North Part Lot 7, municipality of Central Algen, and further that a date for a public meeting be established in accordance with Ontario Regulation 54506.
Would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
No.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
No.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. We now move on to Director of Infrastructure and Community Service and the McCaws Drain. Want to read the motion, please?
Madam Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Council Fair, that report ICS 0922, re-McClaws Drain, be received as information, and that council appoint Brandon Widner of Spirit Associates Limited to prepare a report under Section 78 of the Drainage Act for the McCaws Drain.
Questions or concerns? If not, call the vote, please.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
And now the next one on the Norton Drain. Go ahead and read the motion.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report ICS 1022, re-Norton Drain request for improvement be received for information, and that council provide direction to appoint Brandon Widner of Spirit Associates Limited to prepare a report under Section 78 of the Ontario Drainage Act for the Norton Drain.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, call the vote, please.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And the third one is the Eagle Ridge Trail. Now, I'm not going to have her read the motion because we have to determine whether you want option one, two, or three. So option one is not do anything. Option two is, is to assist with the payment, the half payment for the, the one that is in our Master Trails Plan and that runs from Southdale down into Valerie. And then the option three is both that one and the other one that goes to a park that they're going to be creating. So any discussion concerning this? Counselor Rowe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Where exactly is the future park?
Mr. Perrin, do you know? Yes.
Yeah, the future park, or sorry, the Parkland dedication that was provided in Phase One is on the west side of Phase One. At the top of the, at the top of the, the ravine.
Is that where the Blue Trail ends or?
Blue Trail is actually around the perimeter of that Parkland dedication. It's
Goes down through the ravine and then around?
No, it doesn't go into the ravine. I may, I'll share my
It looked, I was, yeah.
Naturalized play area in the bottom left picture, bottom left of that last sheet. That the one must appear.
So this is from the report. So the actual park area that's been dedicated is where my cursor is surrounding on the west side of Snowy Owl Trail.
Okay. And then what's the, the trail that goes down? Appears to go down, if you look to the north of that, that you did, the Blue Trail appears to go down into the ravine and back up again.
It, it's actually not in the ravine. It's, it's at the top of the ravine because of the location. That ravine is based on the topography prior to development, and the Stormwater Management Pond is on the, the head of the ravine. There is minor fill that was placed to allow for that pond to be there. So it's actually in the spillway to the Stormwater Management Pond.
Okay. So questions and comments, please, on this. Deputy Mayor Marks?
I, I'm in favor of participating, you know, if you look ahead. Certainly, if you look back the last two years, one thing that the public have shown us, their eagerness to get outside and partake in doors and trails and walking. It suits everyone and it seems to be very, very popular. A whole lot more popular if you look back a bunch of years. That's what people want. So we've got a good developer willing to partner with it. I, I think majority of the public would support this. So I'm in favor of it.
Counselor Fair?
I was thinking more of the option two. I, I don't know that I feel comfortable giving a, just a blanket approval for whatever comes up in the future. I, I'd like to look at it as each individual one. And so that's why I like the option two, which we've already built into our plans. And, and then we'll deal with the other ones as they come up, if they come up.
Yeah, the Blue Trail, though, I, I did check, and Mr. Perrin believes they're going to put the park in this year, and they're going to put the trail in this year. But they're deferring charging us till next year if we wish to pay half. Counselor Rowe and Counselor Wynn?
Yeah, I thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just suggest that, that, that we fund 50% of the Yellow Trail. That's an option two.
Thank you.
I'm in agreeance. The option two.
Is that by consensus, basically? And now who were the mover and secondor? Do you have them?
Mover is Counsel Fair, secondary is Deputy Mayor Marks.
Are you both in favor of option two?
Yes.
Okay. So option two on their motion, read it.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report ICS 1122, re-Eagle Ridge Multi-Use Path be received for information, and that council direct staff to proceed with option two as per said report, respecting the construction and funding of the multi-use paths in Eagle Ridge subdivision.
Thank you. Call the vote.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Now, we're moving on to bylaws. So the first one was the BIA minimum levy, and there was no response, no concerns from the businesses that we received. Did you wish to speak to that, Counselor Rowe?
I, number two, I did.
Oh, okay. Number two, go ahead then.
It's just a question. On Schedule B, there's a portion near the top of the report, I guess, it calls out the amount in words, and then right underneath it is a number, but they don't correspond. So I'm just wondering. One is for one million, the other one's for three million.
For you, Madam Mayor. FCM didn't change over the previous bylaw, so we'll make the typographical correction to align with the covering bylaw and, and the initial body of the bylaw. This deals with everything from the 3.2566 loan that the municipality has not paid back to date. So we'll make that correction, and it, it should read
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Counselor Fair?
I did, I thought, I, I think I'm right. The interest rate is, does say 2.62. Does that mean for the whole life of it doesn't change, like an amortization schedule every five years or three?
For you, Madam Mayor, Counsel Fair, you're absolutely correct. The first tranche was 1.85%. The second tranche was 3.39%, which resulted in a weighted average blended tranche of 2.62%. So for the remainder of this loan, the, the rate will be 2.62%.
Okay, any other questions? If not, would you read the motion to, on the bylaws?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Council Fair, that bylaws 2705 and 2706, be read a first and a second time.
Call the vote.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Next motion?
Second motion on the bylaws, moved by Counsel Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that bylaws 2705 and 2706 be read a third time and finally passed.
Call the vote.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And we've just a note there about the public information session. I'm sorry. Okay, the public information session that will be held on our waterfront master plan at the Port Stanley Arena. There's both an afternoon session and an evening session. It's common. Look at what's being proposed and make suggestions, ask questions, et cetera. So just, that's just for information. Now, the next one, the, under the motions and notice of motion. This, because of the internet issues, this was actually sent to us at least three weeks ago. But I didn't, I knew nothing about it. None of us did, because of course, we weren't able to receive information through our, our internet. So when this woman, when we finally got up again, this woman sent me one asking why she'd never heard anything, why we'd never responded. Malahide Nellmer did receive it and have adopted it. So I asked if it could be put on tonight, because I do, sitting on the hospital board, I know the stress that the nurses, et cetera, have been under. And the hospital just keeping staff. And right now, we have 78 people off with either COVID or exposure to COVID, et cetera. And so everyone is very much in a burned out, exhausted state. And, and Counselor Wynn, you know, you work in a home. If you'd like to speak, sure.
Well, yeah, just from a firsthand basis, it's just to see what, not, not just the RNs, but as they say, healthcare staff are going through on a daily basis. The stress levels are unbelievable, and yet they meet it the face, in, in the face of it and continue on. So it, it is a, an, an area or a group that has been high, I would agree, highly neglected. And unfortunately, COVID. I, I can't say fortunately, but COVID has really put a spotlight on what these people have to face on a daily basis. So, yeah, this is, this is way overdue.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
I have the most respect for nurses, I've got a sister as a nurse, sister-in-law, and many, many friends. And you're, you're right, I sat seven years in the, the hospital. There, we're so fortunate, the services we have locally. And, you know, good, good people supporting this as a natural thing. I'm 100% very happy to support it. We, we owe them a, a big debt of gratitude, for sure.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
I, I would just like to say, because they do say, they do refer to, to registered staff, but they also include healthcare staff, because the support workers are, are should, or need to be mentioned. It's not just registered staff, but the personal support workers are equally as involved as registered staff are too. So we, we tend to always speak about RNs, but healthcare, healthcare aides are equally as important as registered staff are too. And unfortunately, tend to get missed. So I would just like to say it, it's equally so. They need to be recognized.
Karen, you wish to speak? Counselor Cook, sorry.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Wynn, it's, it's a wonderful comment. So I 100% agree with that. As a nurse myself, coming from this field, I started as a healthcare aide, which of course doesn't exist anymore. They're PSWs. Working up from RPN, RN, and then eventually a college professor. Hardest job I had was the PSW, the personal support workers. They, they really are the hardest ones, and your RPNs in your long-term care facilities. The RNs, I mean, they're running themselves ragged as well. I think this is a fantastic opportunity to recognize them and to, you know, help out financially as well. But I really would like to see that. Maybe we could expand this to the RPNs and PSWs. And I mean, even carrying on to all the staff at work, because in your long-term care facilities, it's the RPNs and PSWs that are the hardest to retain. So I really would like to see them included with this as well. And with minimum wage going up and up and up, it's almost bouncing into what they started at. So obviously, very great idea. I'd love to see it continue on to other healthcare professionals as well. Thank you.
Just one thing, I, I am aware, the Bill 124, though, just deals with RNs and healthcare professionals. The others during COVID did get special pay, at least at the hospital, I'm aware, but the RNs and the professionals were not allowed to have the special pay. So this, and it's, it's freezing the RNs and the, the healthcare professionals at 1%, which is not fair. So I mean, we could certainly, at, at another one, say we strongly thank and support our, the, the other, you know, personal support workers, et cetera, that, that are absolutely vital to the system. But this one, this motion is actually dealing with a bill that the province have, are putting forward to limit nurses, RNs, and professional people in the, in the medicine. And you wanted to speak, Deputy Mayor Marks?
Exactly, I was gonna say. A neighbor's daughter, a nurse works in transplant, you know, over in London. And, and they're, they're clamped down. They cannot get a raise. So this is where it's sort of unfair. Some of the other ones did get raises, bonuses, whatever.
Got bonuses, yeah.
We're thankful for all they do, but this one in particular. So this, I'm glad you pointed that out. So that's what I was gonna say. If you're an RN nurse, you kind of wonder why the rest got it and you didn't.
Exactly.
Fair's fair, and I don't think this
And they all work just as hard. I mean, every one of them were working extremely hard. So. Okay, Mrs. Wilson, you want to read this motion?
I would like to request that this motion be accepted as printed in the agenda.
Thank you kindly, Counselor Krebitz. I'm sure Mrs. Wilson would be thrilled. We have a secondor for Mr. Counsel Krebitz's motion. Counselor Wynn? So be accepted as printed, okay? Now, the motion is before you, I mean, you have to call a vote on that?
On the main.
On the main, okay. On the motion as printed, we will call the vote on it now.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And now, is there any other business before we go into closed session? Yes, Deputy Mayor Marks?
I've had three phone calls in the last week, 10 days, two in the last couple of days, with questions regarding the, I guess, the tennis volleyball, volleyball courts being taken over GTs. All I'm asking, I don't have any answers. I'm requesting to staff if they have any more knowledge, because people are just asking questions of why they were removed, et cetera. I don't have the answers, and I'm just wondering if staff do or so.
Either Mr. Brooks?
Mr. Brooks.
Mr. Brooks, go ahead.
Thank you. The volleyball nets that were owned and operated by the lessee of 350 Edith Cavell Boulevard have been removed this spring. Staff haven't been in contact with the lessee of the property at this point to determine the reason for the removal. However, the lessee is not required to operate beach volleyball courts out on the land out in front of the property. If council wishes to pursue the installation of volleyball nets through the municipality, staff would be happy to report back.
Deputy Mayor? Deputy Mayor.
Seemed to me from the people I talked to, they were disappointed that they're being taken down, but I think that would please them. So I'd certainly support the report to them back with some information, you know, I'm not going to take out volleyball, but tons of people like to and a lot of people like to watch it. So I'd support someone coming back. Could you see me playing volleyball? I'd support staff coming back with the report, please. Thank you.
Counsel Cravitz.
Oh, I wish that if that's a request to have staff come back with a report, that'd be fine. But I would have a concern on who's going to actually maintain these nets and because I believe GT, they actually will schedule then have people could book time at GTs and and they actually randomly, I I don't know the ins and outs of it, but I think it's something extra that I don't know how we would maintain it. But if it's just a matter of a staff report, I hate to put more burden on staff, but I would support something like that. Yes.
Counsel Row and then Counsel Win.
There, I I'd have to find my notes, but this, I had a similar request, but it was several months ago, I guess, and I thought that the response at the time was there's no change. The volleyball association, wherever they're coming from, we're going to be able to play there. So now I'm a little confused. So having a report come back just to the status of it would be helpful.
Counsel Win.
Um, basically, the same thing as, say, the same thing as as Counselor Row. And and I would think that if like with our arenas, if there's a volleyball association, then they would probably be the ones to pick up with the scheduling and and such with the, with the volleyball courts.
Yeah, well, we'll have to let staff bring us back a report because obviously with GTs, you had to reserve. And they, that was land they were renting from us. They could control who was using it. I do not see having staff having to do that. So I I agree with a report coming back. Do you need a motion for that? I'm sorry, Counsel Fair.
I had one quick question. Said it was leased properties. Are they not leasing that anymore? They just walked away from that portion of the lease?
No, they're leasing it still.
So then it would be under their control to decide which
But they've taken the volleyball down. So they're not going to have volleyball on the part they're leasing anymore. They're still going to lease it, but they're going to serve food out there. I believe. Mr. Brooks, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It it's unclear why the beach volleyball nets were taken down. There's been no communication to staff that there's any other intention of using that particular area that the beach volleyball courts are located on. And that the area where the beach volleyball courts previously sat is an additional area in which the lessee could use for uses such as beach volleyball. There may be some restrictions on what could be used out there, but we'll detail it all in a future report.
Thank you. Counsel Cravitz.
That report is not going to include a council volleyball team.
Great.
I was a good volleyball player many, many years ago, but not anymore.
Madam Mayor, it's adequate that of
Just staff direction.
Staff direction to bring back a report.
Okay, we're giving you a direction. Mr. Brooks, to bring back a report. Thank you. Any other business? If not, motion to move into closed?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counsel Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that council proceeded to post session in order to address a matter pertaining to security of property, a position, plan, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board.
You've called the vote.
Counsel Row.
Yes.
Counsel Cravitz.
Yes.
Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Counsel Fair.
Yes.
Counsel Win.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
That resolution carries.
Got help. Let's close the doors for him. All right, would you read the motion to move out of close, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counsel Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that council adjourned from closed session and returned to open session at nine fifteen P M.
Call the vote.
Counsel Row.
Yes.
Counsel Cravitz.
Yes.
Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Counsel Fair.
Yes.
Counsel Win.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
And the bylaws?
Confirmatory bylaw, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counsel Fair, that bylaw twenty-seven oh four be read a first and a second time.
Call the vote.
Counsel Row.
Yes.
Counsel Cravitz. Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Counsel Fair.
Yes.
Counsel Win.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Last one on the bylaw.
Moved by Counsel Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that bylaw twenty-seven oh four be read a third time and finally passed.
Call the vote.
Counsel Row.
Yes.
Counsel Cravitz.
Yes.
Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Counsel Fair.
Yes.
Counsel Win.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And the final motion.
Reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counsel Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that the regular meeting of council dated Monday, April the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, be adjourned at nine sixteen P M. And the next regular meeting of council be scheduled for Monday, May the ninth, twenty twenty, at seven P M.
Call the vote.
Yes.
Counsel Cravitz.
Yes.
Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Counsel Fair.
Yes.
Counsel Win.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you, everyone.